Good evening, I'd like to call to order the school committee meeting for this evening, Monday, April 29th, 2019. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, relity, and justice for all.
I just want to take a moment to remind everyone that this meeting is being taped by our own Dartmouth Community Television and our high school students to be replayed on Dartmouth Cable, Channel 9, on Wednesdays, Thursdays, Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays. And then you can also find the recordings and many other interesting productions on the Dartmouth High School TV media YouTube channel. I recommend that you follow them. And I also want to ask if anyone has any kind of noisemakers, any cell phones, to just please like turn them on vibrate so that it's not distracting to the meeting. Roll call, please.
Kathleen Amorall.
Here.
Chris Oliver.
Here.
Carol Karafotis.
Here.
John Noons.
I'm here.
Okay. First on our agenda is we have allotted some time for people to come on up and comment on any item that's on the agenda tonight. And if you do wish to speak, I ask that you come to the podium and state your name and try to make your comments as brief as possible. Don't come running. Okay.
Guess that's a no.
What's that? And so next on our agenda is the approval of the regular session minutes of April 8th, 2019.
So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Oliver, second by Mr. Noons. On the motion, any discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
One abstention.
Okay. So that, thank you, motion carries. Next, we have Taylor Als here for our student rep report.
So our color guard did an extremely well job at the world championship, making it to the final round as an indoor percussion who finished in fourth place overall and won the fan favorite award. The harmonics group just was featured on the Sing That Thing Friday night on PBS. For anyone who may have missed it, the episode is posted to the Sing That Thing website under Season 5, Episode 3. Many of our spring athletic teams have started off very strong. We have our sailing team, which is 13-2, as well as our softball team, which is 6-1 this season, amongst many other sports teams who have performed very well. Our AP art students hosted an art exhibit, In the Moment, on Friday and Saturday night at Russell Mills Schoolhouse and are in preparation for the annual art show and Innovation Night, which takes place at the Carlin Lynch Activity Center on May 6th at 6:00 PM for grades K through 12. We have students currently competing in the international level of DECA in Orlando. Unfortunately, Mr. Tebow did not get an update for our report that we worked on, but I did just get an update from Ms. Kane stating that kids have been having an awesome time, learning a lot from the workshops, and they'll be at many awards tomorrow. So they're very excited to see the outcome, that students have been working extremely hard on their performances, and hopefully they perform to their best of their capability. So Student Council just held their annual elections, and many candidates ran for their positions, and for all the students who participated, congratulations to them. All students in grades 9 through 11 made their course requests this past week. Members from the school counseling department will visit the middle school on May 2nd and May 3rd for the incoming 9th graders to help with their course selection for next year. The art department and art students went to Iceland from April 10th to the 16th. They experienced Icelandic culture, science, history, amongst many other things, but I must say my favorite part of this trip is getting to see all the photography that comes back with them of the beautiful landscapes and different cultural experiences that they had while there. Students truly enjoyed that trip across the globe. The marine biology classes just went on a local outing to collect some creatures for their classes that they'll observe for the remainder of the year. I can speak from experience, that is a very awesome experiment to, you know, kind of get all your creatures and see them grow, see which ones make it, things like that. Good luck to all the DHS students who are taking part in the math MCAS that is coming up very soon. They've been prepping for quite a bit, and good luck to them. Our Spanish classes just did a trip to the MFA to see the Frida exhibit. Students truly enjoyed that, so thank you for approving that. And last but not least, the business department just had the First Citizens Federal Credit Union workers come to visit from all different areas of their business departments to talk to kids about different fields in business and how credit unions work.
That's great.
Wow, that was great. Good job. Thank you.
Thanks for the update.
Of course. Okay, next on our agenda, our consent agenda, is the 2019 Summer Arts Camp. And so Dr. Gifford has recommended the approval of the request, and so the proposal was in our packet. Is, I don't...
Make a motion to approve the summer arts workshop to run from the last week in June and first week in July, June 24th to July 5th.
I'll second that.
Okay.
And I'll just add that it's a wonderful program. I'm happy that it's back for another year this summer, and faculty does a great job with it, so.
Yeah, great. I agree.
I have no reservations.
Yeah, I agree. So a motion by Mr. Noons, second by Mr. Oliver. Any discussion other than the comments that you've already offered? I agree with you. Lot of great, fun, and creative activities. Chair hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And abstentions or oppositions? No? Okay, motion carries unanimously. All right, so what do we have next? My phone wants... Darn Wi-Fi. So we have old business. Okay. So the Fiscal 2024 Capital Improvement Plan, Mr. Kylie?
Thank you, Mrs. Amorall. I just wanted to share this with you for two reasons. First of all, I wanted to give you an update, just so that we're clear on what has been recommended for funding for town meeting. And then I wanted to have you vote the whole plan, because we actually never voted it previously, although we talked about it on a couple of occasions, we never had a vote. So hopefully you'll continue to support the plan, but the items that are recommended for funding by the Capital Improvement Planning Committee, and to my knowledge have yet to be voted by the Finance Committee, but I think that's on top for this week, are the technology hardware of 200,000, technology hardware replacement smartboards, 180,000, one maintenance truck for 65,000, and flooring replacement for 175,000. So the maintenance truck and the flooring replacement were sort of critical things to get in the works this summer, so they've... The flooring, the only time we can do it is summer, so they've agreed to fund that, and that's all that they've agreed to fund on our list. Nothing else has changed on the list. There still are requests, but they would be considered at the October town meeting.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Mr. Kylie, just to confirm a couple of things. The flooring replacement, what schools are we looking out for that?
DeMello, Potter, and the middle school. We're continuing, we've been working on those schools gradually, piece by piece, classroom by classroom, and in some cases, hallways. So we're gradually making our way through those buildings. This isn't gonna finish anything, but it's gonna continue that process and...
Just out of curiosity, is there a timeframe or a timetable that we can kind of...
It's years, yeah, it's...
So we'll be funding this for the next three to five years, easily?
Oh, yeah, more, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, we're not necessarily gonna ask for money every year for it. I mean, it does, it is relative to our overall priorities. We try and hit the classrooms. When we do this, we try and do, if it's a classroom, not a hallway, we try and take care of the entire classroom at once. So we'll replace the lighting, the ceiling, they'll paint the walls. It's basically like a complete renovation of the classroom when we do this. So we can only do so many of those in a summer.
Yep.
But we're working on that and continuing through and replacing the worst ones first, of course.
And of course, I'm always pleased to see that the town is supporting us with our technology needs, and it's amazing that, it seems like it was just yesterday that we were just finishing up putting the smartboards in, and now we're looking to take them down and replace them. But that's the price of technology in doing business.
It is.
So they are aware that the Dartmouth Memorial Stadium is for, would be our number one for the fall.
They are aware. They are aware. The indication that I got at our meetings was that they would consider that for borrowing in the fall.
Okay.
Consider, so no guarantees.
Sure.
But they understand that it is our priority.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Kylie.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Kylie, quick question on the smartboard replacement.
Mm-hmm.
And I agree with Mr. Oliver, it's like they just went, but how many of those does that replace?
About 30. Where, which doesn't get us quite where we need to be, but it's a big start on this. And the thing is, you know, we put most of these in at the same time. You know, it was eight, seven, eight years ago, these things, you know, were being installed, and we had a great effort to get, you know, to get them done and get them in throughout the district, but unfortunately, they're all going at the same time. So this will help address that, and then we can get into a regular replacement cycle for, hopefully.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair, make a motion that we improve the, approve the capital improvement plan as presented to us in the amount of $3,382,000.
It's not quite that much, is it?
That's the whole plan, the whole plan, though. You want the whole, you want the whole plan, right, the whole three?
The whole number?
Yes, please.
Yeah.
All right. I'll second that.
You got that?
Yep. So I have a motion by Mr. Noons and a second by Ms. Karafotis. Any other discussion in addition? Okay. Chair hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. So new business. So the revision of the school committee policy. Ms. Ray?
This year Dartmouth has been selected for tiered focus monitoring, which includes some policy updating, and under ESSA, the three policies that need to be updated are the homeless, students, students awaiting foster care placement, and education opportunities for military students. We had a homeless student policy that is specifically needed to be updated to include summer programming and the removal of students awaiting foster care under ESSA are no longer included in the homeless policy. The foster care and the military children are two new policies. We currently follow the requirements, we just didn't have a policy. So a couple of things that are required under foster care now, the district of origin would include full transportation cost. We have to hold a best interest determination about whether it would be in the student's best interest to continue in Dartmouth or whatever district they're currently living in. And we, usually the principals will speak with the principal of the other school, and we talk with DCF and see if it's gonna be a long-term placement, a short-term placement, something like that. What time of the year it is, all of that. And the immediate...
That's specifically, I'm sorry, that's specifically for foster students?
And the immediate enrollment of these students if they come to us without all of their records.
Okay.
The military, again, part of the interstate compact, includes not only the immediate enrollment while we await records, but it includes some things such as if a student had a graduation requirement, let's say in Texas, and they passed the Texas State Test in grade 10, we can, we maybe considered that through the appeal processes in lieu of MCAS. It might include that if they were enrolled in kindergarten at a different entrance age than our entrance age, that we can also, we certain things like that. So it includes, the idea is to, like with foster and homeless, to provide some sort of educational stability for those students who are often transient, like the other two. So these three are recommended for first read tonight.
And so, anyone?
I have nothing to add.
It would be a second read and vote at the next meeting.
At the next meeting?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you for that. That's good. Next is the, some revisions to the student handbook.
So if you remember, last year, we did a complete revision of the handbook to create a Dartmouth Public Schools handbook, which would include commonalities between all levels. And you heard Principal Tebow last time talk about the, just the high school appendix, which included just high school specific. So I'm gonna give you an update on this, but I would ask you table the vote till next time, because it does include the updated language on the homeless policy, which you haven't taken a second vote on. So there are very few changes since we did this last time, so you'll see the cover includes our update to the nondiscrimination policy that we voted in November, including the three new protected areas, the genetic information, the military status, and the pregnancy and pregnancy-related condition. The inside cover has the updated calendar. The third page has the new high school assistant principal.
When did that take place?
Just recently. I was thinking about...
Unless I missed an email or something.
No, 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 no. He, we just got him on board, but he's gonna be in the district in the next couple of days, working to kind of get transitioned, but we'll bring him to meet you all soon. Yeah, yeah, you will, but not just yet, yeah. Obviously, he'll take over, you know, July, but, yeah, so he just got appointed recently, and he'll be here to meet you soon.
Page 19 includes the update to the homeless language, and page 29 includes the update to the nondiscrimination. So other than that, everything is the same.
Same, okay. And so we'll table that until we vote on the...
Table that with the vote, until you vote the homeless.
Yeah, good, okay. And the proposed, next, in order, the town's proposed revisions to the overall financial policies. So they're looking for a vote.
If you want.
Yep, please do.
So this was a continuation, I believe Mr. Noons asked for us to just briefly speak about it at the joint meeting with the Select Board at Fincom. My only question's gonna be over to our Business Assistant Superintendent of Business and Finance. Do you have any concerns over any of these policies, anything that you would recommend, Mr. Kylie?
Well, I mean, the only change that they have proposed is on item number 11, which is other post-employment benefits. So in doing so, they've allocated some additional funding to try and address that liability. It's been something that's been talked about in town for a long time, and it's a, it's an actuarial calculation that, you know, is made to determine that liability, and the liability is significant for the town. It is something that a lot of communities are not funding yet. There's no requirement to fund it. We've been funding it at a fairly high level, and I think that it ultimately reflects well on the bond rating of the community and the perception that we're trying to address things down the road. I mean, from our perspective, I mean, we have no authority over this, and I may have my own opinion. I, you know, adding more money to this takes away from money to do other things with. So that's, that's something that, you know, is unavoidable if you want to allocate more money to post-employment benefits, you have less money for now.
Right. Yeah, I personally have my own opinion on OPEB and all this, but the way I, the way I understand this contract language and the way it was presented to us at the joint meeting is currently Bristol County member, Bristol County Retirement members are actually, Bristol County Retirement is already charging the town...
Yes.
...for the OPEB liability, and that's expected to be paid off, and it was, it's the way they made it sound was that once that's paid off, they're gonna continue taking that money and putting it towards some of the other post-retirement benefits. Is that, is that the way you understood?
That's, that is what they're proposing here, yeah.
Okay.
And I believe that they've done that and maybe then some in this budget proposal. They've allocated some more funding to OPEB.
Right.
Above and beyond this, I believe. But, but yeah, yeah, I mean, it's obviously not a requirement. There's a lot of debate about what the state, how the state will react and participate down the road in this issue, or if they ever will. So it's, you know, it is resources, and they can only, you know, if we put them in this, they can't be used for anything else, so.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Noons?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My vote in all seriousness on this is going to be no, okay? I got it, I know what they're trying to do, and that type of deal, I mean. When I first got into municipals back in the mid-'90s, you know, the funding was gonna be done in 2017, which would have, okay? And then they moved it to 2024, and it's out to who knows where now, type of deal. So depending on what the market does and such, and this is saying, you know, 2028, which is fine. But I, we're funding the Bristol County liability based on the assessment that we have every year that we have to pay, and, you know, it's, I don't know, five, you know, $5.1 million next year up from 4.8 this year. I mean, so there, it's being funded, type of deal. As far as OPEB goes, I mean, you know, the town is, you know, if you look at the paperwork that the town gave us, well, we've got, you know, they're looking, you know, reduction in department requests by $190,000. Yet they sit there and, as I read this, they violate their own OPEB liability, and that's why I wasn't, I didn't want to vote on it, 'cause I wanted to look into things. You know, they're talking about $200,000, okay, that's fine, I'll live with that, but they want to go from 200,000 in FY '19, you know, to a department request of 250 this year. And then they want to take the new employees, and they want to move it from 200 to 250. You know, I mean, there's 100 grand that can go someplace else in this budget. I got what they're trying to do, you know, with the ARC and, you know, the trust and everything, but, you know, we have to, at this point in time, we need to live for today and such, and as long as we're putting something into it, and we're consistent, my personal opinion, let it go, because, you know, they talked about running out of money in the sense of, you know, new growth isn't there, buildings aren't being done, you know, local receipts are getting stagnant, you know, surplus revenue, free cash, whatever you want to call it, is not gonna be where it should be. And I think what, you know, you know, something that you're already funding at a decent amount, and I can live with those two numbers at 200 grand each, leave them alone, leave them at that. So my vote on this policy change is no.
Anyone else?
I agree with Mr. Noons.
I know.
I'm just curious, because I'm, you know, I could go either way with this. I understand what you're saying, Mr. Noons. At what point, though, do you, in your opinion, or in Mr. Kylie's opinion, would it affect our bond rating if we're not, do we have anything to be concerned about? I know we're putting away $200,000 right now, but at what point? That would be the, my, because I agree. I'm kind of a big proponent of the here and now and, but...
I mean, I don't know how Moody's or Standard and Poor's is, you know, I've been out of that loop for a couple of years, but I don't know how they're looking at these now, but I mean, if you've got these, you know, the actuarial, and you're putting, you know, the 200 every year plus that amount for the new employees, you know, you're putting, you're doing a good chunk, I think, you know, they're gonna be happy with it. That's a person, but again, that's a personal opinion.
Okay.
Also, I, didn't you say, Mr. Kylie, that a number of districts don't even, aren't even as far along on this process as we are?
Yes, I think, I think most aren't. And that's, you know, to the credit of Dartmouth. I mean, I, being proactive is a great thing, I don't want to paint that as negative in any way, but, but, you know, there was a lot of debate as to, you know, was there gonna be a requirement at some point, or, you know, was the state gonna put pressure on communities to fund this? And, you know, nothing's happened in that regard, and some communities are deciding, you know, they need, they need to allocate these resources for current needs, and, like I said, it's good to be proactive, but, and the liability is large, where, you know, funding it at $200,000, it's gonna, we're never gonna get to fully fund it. So I understand wanting to increase that, but it comes at a cost, and it means that, you know, we don't have money to do other things. So it's something you gotta consider, you know, in terms of long-term planning, you know, it's always a balance.
And so, I mean, they're looking for us to either approve or not at this juncture.
Is this go...
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, whether we approve or not, they can still do what they're gonna do, right?
Yeah.
So it's two other boards.
Yeah. And, you know, personal opinion, they have no authority. Control the strings.
Sure.
So I think they're looking for everybody to be on board with it.
Yeah.
Personally, I can't, so, but again, not me.
Right, so no matter which way we go, I mean, it could be approved, or just like precedent setting that, you know, here we are, poised with so much that we're not funding from our budget, or then they're asking us to cut.
Potentially cut, yeah.
So much more, potentially. Yeah. So with that said, I'm, do I hear a motion either way on this, or how should we...
Yeah, what the heck.
Entertain. Go ahead.
I'll make, Madam Chair, I'll make a motion that we do not approve the addendum to number 11 for the, of the town of Dartmouth overall financial policies.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion to not approve...
That is correct.
...the revisions, the addendum to policy number 11 on the town's overall financial policies, and we have a second by Dr. Karafotis. Any other additional discussion on that? Okay. So all in favor of Mr. Noons' motion?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Aye.
Motion passes three to one.
Motion passes three. Three to one, no abstentions. Okay, thank you. What is next? Oh, we have superintendent's update next. Dr. Gifford?
Sure, we have good things to talk about tonight. So recently, we've had two teachers that are serving on the MCAS Assessment Development Committee through DESI, and that is Anne Brown from the DMS, and Will Higgins, English Lead Teacher at the high school. So it's always nice to have our folks being represented on those various committees. We are very happy to say that we're going to be having a summer, a little bit summer different in our summer reading this year, K through 12, where students are really having some choice in what they're reading. I know, for example, at the high school, they put out for volunteers to choose a book, which I did as well, and, any old book, I suppose, and hope that some students would be interested in participating in that book study with that person, whoever volunteered to do it. So we'll be meeting with our groups of students, and then when they come back in the fall, we'll get to do a book discussion on that particular book. So just reading through the brochure, like I said, it's K through 12, but just reading through the high school, it's amazing the number of choices that students will have for that book study. And our summer institute and our summer school is in the deep planning now, ready to kick off soon. We have some brochures in draft form that will be put out soon, and summer school will be having our online registration again. It's amazing to think it's summer coming, but here it is, right? We all... We also recently had a team of our high school's teachers attend a Highlander Blended and Personalized Conference, and that was, I think, a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, or a Friday, Saturday in Providence. And as you know, we've continued to have our partnership with Highlander Institute. I've been to a couple of things at the high school recently, obviously last year a lot with the middle. Our intent is to continue that partnership and expand it to our elementary schools, which we'll be discussing how that rolls out soon. That will, that all coincides and aligns with the work we're doing with the innovative, Innovation and Leadership, Transformation Leadership Network, which we'll be talking about in a couple of meetings coming up. Recently, we had Administrative Assistance Day, as you might know, and hopefully our assistants were happy with our little gifts and thank yous to them across the district. We also mentioned the Student Officer Elections at DHS, which I was able to attend some of the speeches, and just give the students a lot of credit for being able to stand up in front of their peers and propose what they're proposing, and, you know, I thought about that, that we talk about being, having presentation skills and communication skills, and that certainly shows that they are developing those. The high, middle school had its energy quests, which we attended, not this past time, but last time, so it says, oh, they have the bubble things, and kids go around and get to talk about various energy efficiencies and things like that, so that was exciting. We just have, we're having a second round of iSTEM at the various schools, and we've talked a lot about that, as you know, lots of interest in that, that continues. We also have some teachers now having applied for and being accepted at the Teachers College Summer Institute at Columbia. So when I think about those things, I think about the vast array of professional development that our teachers are able to experience, and certainly that transcends into better opportunities for our students. You may have seen on our Facebook page at the hermit crabs, we're in grade one, so students will be learning about heredity with those little crabs, and I was very interested in seeing that they all had little painted shells. I don't know who did that, but it's kind of cool. And high school students are gearing up for AP testing, just as our other students are winding down from MCAS very soon. I know with Mr. Galishore and the tech department that has been so supportive of the MCAS testing throughout the district, it's really going off very well. And you might know that Footloose is coming this week at the high school, so hopefully you've got your tickets. And just as a coming attraction, the Art and Innovation Night is May 9th, so make sure you look out for that as well, that will be at the high school. And there was a career fair coming at the high school, but we can talk more about that at our May 13th meeting, so, lots going on.
Excellent.
Wonderful. I think for reporter of the chair, the only other thing that I think I have, because, Taylor, thank you for being so comprehensive.
I know, she always is.
Fantastic.
It was, is that the Dartmouth High School after prom, so the prom, senior prom is May 30th. There's a meeting on May 7th at 6:30 at the high school, and they are encouraging parents of underclassmen as well as upperclassmen to volunteer. They've done a great job this year with raising money, and it's quite an effort, and so if you are interested in volunteering to set up in any way, it's a great, safe event for our kids. They're meeting at, on the 7th at 6:30. Yeah, I think that's all I have. Does anybody have anything else?
I mean, just to piggyback on your, about the after prom, Madam Chair, it's a great time, it's a lot of fun to, you know, there's plenty for the students to do, and plenty of food and good entertainment, and, you know, things that they do, so it's always, it's always a lot of fun.
Yeah, yeah, so fantastic. All right, so our next meeting is the 13th, as we said. And at this point, I would entertain a motion, I'm gonna say this the right way, to adjourn into executive session, not to return to open public session, for to update and discuss negotiation matters.
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Mr. Nunes, second by Mr. Oliver. Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, roll call, please. I know.
Kathleen Amorall?
Here.
Chris Oliver?
Yes.
Carol Karafotis? John Nunes?
Yes.
Thank you, good night.